Okay, I'm sorry. I'll take, I will go in. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll go ahead and start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads please. Heavenly Father, we pray for your blessings upon our leaders and the community that we serve. We ask and thank you first of all for the children and our youth and we ask that you watch over them during their spring break activities. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation on our Girl Scouts of the USA Week.
Yes Mayor Council, good afternoon.
Yes ma'am.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Julia Daisy Gordon Low founded the Girl Scouts of the USA on March 12th, 1912. Whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, connect with others in a multicultural environment. Whereas Girl Scouting is continuing the legacy of creating gender balanced leadership in the United States and the world in its second century of service to girls by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country and the world a better place. And whereas Girl Scouts outdoor experiences are an integral part of the United Scout leadership experience for girls of all ages, outdoor activities are woven into the Core Leadership Development Program in such a way that girls feel comfortable in trying new things and testing their limits and gain confidence and acquire new skills in a safe and supportive all-girl environment. Whereas Girl Scouts of Greater South Texas, Troops 196, 212, 219, 378, 1030, 1042, 1065, and Girl Scouts Mission Service Unit are committed to ensuring every girl has the opportunity to explore and build an interest in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. STEM, helping them to develop critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, and collaborative skills which are vital throughout life. Whereas girls in grades nine through twelve who demonstrate extraordinary leadership through action projects have sustainable impacts on their communities and beyond are presented the Girl Scouts Gold Award. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby applaud the commitment Girl Scouting and Girl Scouts of Greater South Texas, Troops 196, 212, 219, 378, 1030, 1042, 1065, and Girl Scouts Mission Service Unit has made to support the continued advancement of the girls in their roles as leaders here in our city and declare the week of March 11th through 17th of 2018 to be Girl Scouts Week in Mission, Texas. Proclaimed on this the 12th day of March, 2018.
Would you like a motion to go ahead and approve the proclamation?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and if there can all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
And Mayor Council, with us today is Ms. Marisol. She is one of the co-leaders of one of the troops and she has been instrumental in bringing all these troops here with us and they would like to take individual pictures with their troop, with the council, but if I can have Marisol please.
Good afternoon, my name is Marisol Guerra and I am one of the co-leaders for Girl Scout Troop 212. I would like to thank the City of Mission in allowing our Girl Scouts in their efforts to contribute to beautifying our city as well as bettering our community. I would like to extend our gratitude to the City of Mission, our City Mayor, Beto Salinas, and our Prestige Board members for extending this proclamation recognizing our Girl Scouts who are celebrating their 106th birthday this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can do it here, we'll do them individually. Can I have the girls from 196?
Individually?
All the troops, the little troops.
Oh, the little groups.
196.
196.
Hello.
Take a picture. Come on, we will, hello. He doesn't bite, I promise.
I won't bite.
We're gonna take a picture real quick, okay?
Let's put it on top of the shirt. There, something.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I see. Come on, we're gonna get you on top of the shirt. You're not gonna be like me.
Okay, now we can have you. Troop 212?
Who is the one with the long beard, yes ma'am?
Should we do it?
Yeah, because we have to go over there.
Sit up there, over here, over here.
We're gonna move to the front, guys, okay?
Yes.
We're gonna move to the front. Oh, okay. Come on, girls, come on. Okay.
Mayor, careful where you step. It's careful where you step. Mayor, careful where you step. Here we go. Mayor, you're the mayor. Okay, a bit. Okay. Just picture with you. Okay. Just picture, smile. Look at these cameras, please.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job. 219?
219.
219?
Hello, you.
278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go. Go get this to them.
Okay.
True, 1030? 1030?
Right here.
There you go. Good job.
Hold it like that.
One more?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Ready? Put it together.
Good job, thank you.
Beautiful.
1032? 42, 1042. Here, make sure he makes it.
This. One more. Thank you.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all.
Can I ask about the leaders up here?
Sure, absolutely, yes.
All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Next item, we do have a presentation by a public servant.
Thank you, thank you Mayor and Council, good afternoon. Actually, this is a very important day for the City of Mission, a day that really an event takes place that not very often happens, but certainly it's an event that is a great honor to be a part of. You have two great public servants who served the community of Mission for over 35 years. And so, so happens that we have a deputy fire chief who is retiring after 35 years of service and we also have an assistant police chief who is retiring after 36 years of service. Before I continue, I'm gonna ask Chief Dominguez and Chief Sanchez to come up here with me. And, and these assistant chiefs were assistant chiefs that actually served under the command of both Police Chief Dominguez and also Fire Chief Sanchez here. And not only did they serve these two chiefs, but they also served other chiefs that were in the organization for many years. And so, we're here to celebrate the retirement of two individuals who provided a lot of sacrifice, a lot of family hours and commitment to the City of Mission. I wanna thank the families for being here with them today because without our families, I know that these are careers that are very hard and impossible to go through without the love of their wives and without the loves of their families and siblings. So I wanna thank them for being here, I wanna thank them for allowing the City of Mission to have them for these 35, 36 years and to commit, commit them to the service of public service. And so, we're very grateful to have all the families here. We do have Jose Antonio Garcia, we all know him as Tony Garcia. Tony served for 36 years in the police department. He went from the rank of patrolman all the way to the Assistant Chief of Police. And I was very honored to, to actually, to name and pin Assistant Police Chief as the Assistant Police Chief a few years back. And so, I grew up with Tony from the patrolman years all the way to his administrative years. So, very happy to have served with Tony Garcia. Also with Deputy Fire Chief Ricardo Valderas, Chief Valderas, you know, served for many years as well. And I also had an opportunity to serve with Chief Valderas through, throughout our careers and so, very happy to be a part of it. We do have two proclamations. I'm gonna ask Chief Dominguez and Chief Sanchez to go ahead and read those proclamations on behalf of Mayor Salinas and our City Council.
Mayor, City Council, it gives me great pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Mission wishes to recognize Jose Antonio Garcia for his 36 years of dedicated service to the City of Mission Police Department and whereas he served the City of Mission with great pride and honor and stood for utmost professionalism in public service to the citizens of Mission and whereas he began his long-form career in 1972 at the age of 19 as a communications officer for the cities of Mercedes and Westaco, a booking officer for the Dow County Sheriff's Department. In 1979, following his military service with the United States Army, he graduated from the LRGVDC Police Academy and began working for the City Elsa Police Department, continuing his long-form career in 1981 with the City of Alamo Police Department, and finally dedicating 36 years of service to the City of Mission Police Department from February the 26th, 1982 through March 29th, 2018. And whereas Jose Antonio Garcia's tenure with the City of Mission Police Department was a prosperous and fulfilling career, he advanced through the ranks from patrol officer to sergeant to lieutenant and assistant chief of police. And whereas Jose Antonio Garcia served as president of the Texas Narcotics Officers Association and has received several recognition awards to include Award of Valor, the Silver Star of Bravery from the National Police Officer Hall of Fame, Texas Narcotics Officer Association Officer of the Year, Service Appreciation Award from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, Fraternal Order of Police First State Vice President, and Mission Police Officer of the Year. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby express our appreciation to Jose Antonio Garcia for his dedication, selflessness, and commitment to the citizens of Mission, proclaimed on this the 12th day of March of 2018.
Would you like a motion to approve the?
I move for approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion in the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Assistant Chief Garcia wants to say a few words, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, thank you. First, let me thank my Lord for keeping me safe these 36 years. Thank you all for allowing me to serve this fine community and citizens for 36 years, my family, my wife, so, she stood by me for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask you and the council, we can step down and take a picture with Assistant Chief Police Garcia and also the family. We also do have a presentation on behalf of Mayor Salinas and the council. This is for the 36 years of service through the Office of State Representative Sergio Muñoz. We have a state flag that was flown over the Capitol on March the 7th of this year and we'd like to present this on behalf of the mayor and the council. We can take a quick picture with you, Tony. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we can have you. Troop 212?
There you go, Mayor.
Who is the one with the long beard, yes ma'am?
We're gonna take a picture real quick, okay?
Let's put it on top of the shirt. There, something.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I see. Come on, we're gonna get you on top of the shirt. You're not gonna be like me.
Okay, now we can have you. Troop 212? There you go, Mayor.
Who is the one with the long beard, yes ma'am?
We're gonna take a picture real quick, okay?
Let's put it on top of the shirt. There, something.
Yes. Okay, now we can have you. Troop 212? There you go, Mayor.
Who is the one with the long beard, yes ma'am?
We're gonna take a picture real quick, okay? We're gonna move to the front. Oh, okay. Come on, girls, come on. Okay.
Mayor, careful where you step. It's careful where you step. Mayor, careful where you step. Here we go. Mayor, you're the mayor. Okay, a bit. Okay. Just picture with you. Look at these cameras, please.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job. 219?
219.
219?
Hello, you.
278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay. True.
True, 1030? 1030?
Yeah.
There you go. Good job. 219?
Right here.
There you go. Good job. 219? 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
True.
True, 1032? 42, 1042. Here, make sure he makes it.
This.
Okay.
One more.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much.
Thank you all very much. Next item, we do have a presentation by a public servant.
Thank you, thank you Mayor and Council, good afternoon. Actually, this is a very important day for the City of Mission, a day that really an event takes place that not very often happens, but certainly it's an event that is a great honor to be a part of. You have two great public servants who served the community of Mission for over 35 years. And so, so happens that we have a deputy fire chief who is retiring after 35 years of service and we also have an assistant police chief who is retiring after 36 years of service. Before I continue, I'm gonna ask Chief Dominguez and Chief Sanchez to come up here with me. And, and these assistant chiefs were assistant chiefs that actually served under the command of both Police Chief Dominguez and also Fire Chief Sanchez here. And not only did they serve these two chiefs, but they also served other chiefs that were in the organization for many years. And so, we're here to celebrate the retirement of two individuals who provided a lot of sacrifice, a lot of family hours and commitment to the City of Mission. I wanna thank the families for being here with them today because without our families, I know that these are careers that are very hard and impossible to go through without the love of their wives and without the loves of their families and siblings. So I wanna thank them for being here, I wanna thank them for allowing the City of Mission to, to have them for these 35, 36 years and to commit, commit them to the service of public service. And so, we're very grateful to, to have all the families here. We do have Jose Antonio Garcia, we all know him as Tony Garcia. Tony served for 36 years in the police department. He went from the rank of patrolman all the way to the Assistant Chief of Police. And I was very honored to, to actually, to name and pin Assistant Police Chief as the Assistant Police Chief a few years back. And so, I grew up with Tony from the patrolman years all the way to his administrative years. So, very happy to have served with, with Tony Garcia. Also with Deputy Fire Chief Ricardo Valderas, Chief Valderas, you know, served for many years as well. And I also had an opportunity to serve with Chief Valderas through, throughout our careers and so, very happy to be a part of it. We do have two proclamations. I'm gonna ask Chief Dominguez and Chief Sanchez to go ahead and read those proclamations on behalf of Mayor Salinas and our City Council.
Mayor, City Council, it gives me great pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Mission wishes to recognize Jose Antonio Garcia for his 36 years of dedicated service to the City of Mission Police Department and whereas he served the City of Mission with great pride and honor and stood for utmost professionalism in public service to the citizens of Mission and whereas he began his long-form career in 1972 at the age of 19 as a communications officer for the cities of Mercedes and Westaco, a booking officer for the Dow County Sheriff's Department. In 1979, following his military service with the United States Army, he graduated from the LRGBDC Police Academy and began working for the City Elsa Police Department, continuing his long-form career in 1981 with the City of Alamo Police Department, and finally dedicating 36 years of service to the City of Mission Police Department from February the 26th, 1982 through March 29th, 2018. And whereas Jose Antonio Garcia's tenure with the City of Mission Police Department was a prosperous and fulfilling career, he advanced through the ranks from patrol officer to sergeant to lieutenant and assistant chief of police. And whereas Jose Antonio Garcia served as president of the Texas Narcotics Officers Association and has received several recognition awards to include Award of Valor, the Silver Star of Bravery from the National Police Officer Hall of Fame, Texas Narcotics Officer Association Officer of the Year, Service Appreciation Award from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, Fraternal Order of Police First State Vice President, and Mission Police Officer of the Year. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby express our appreciation to Jose Antonio Garcia for his dedication, selflessness, and commitment to the citizens of Mission, proclaimed on this the 12th day of March of 2018.
Would you like a motion to approve the?
I move for approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion in the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Assistant Chief Garcia wants to say a few words, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, thank you. First, let me thank my Lord for keeping me safe these 36 years. Thank you all for allowing me to serve this fine community and citizens for 36 years, my family, my wife, so, she stood by me for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask you and the council, we can step down and take a picture with Assistant Chief Police Garcia and also the family. We also do have a presentation on behalf of Mayor Salinas and the council. This is for the 36 years of service through the Office of State Representative Sergio Muñoz. We have a state flag that was flown over the Capitol on March the 7th of this year and we'd like to present this on behalf of the mayor and the council. We can take a quick picture with you, Tony. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. 219? 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay. Thank you. True.
True, 1030? 1030?
Yeah.
There you go. Good job. 219? 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay. Thank you.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. That's all. It's all together, thank you all. 219? Can I ask about the leaders up here? Sure, absolutely, yes. All the troop leaders, in-class leaders.
Group leaders.
We have been hiding over there. He's out there talking to Brad. Yes. I feel pretty much. 219? 219? 278, 378. 378, I'm sorry. Here you go, Mayor. Go get this to them.
Okay.
1065? That's all. Now, whether I'm wrong or right, I think that the Progress Times, being given a place here in the council chambers, reserved for them specifically, should take the time to investigate my claim. It's not a question about who's a nice guy and who does good works. It is about the rule of law, our very own city charter. You must live there six months prior.
Mayor and council, I apologize, but there is a three-minute rule. I don't know if the mayor wishes to give him additional time, but we do have that rule. I just want to let the council be aware of that rule.
What rule?
The three-minute rule, Mayor. Whenever a citizen comes up, they have three minutes. But the council can extend the time if you so desire.
Yeah. Who did?
The show.
Thank you, your honor. Our very own city charter says each member of the city council shall be a resident citizen. Now, I can cherry pick permanent, primary. Now, it's where you live. It's where you wake up in the morning and you brush your teeth. And you can't brush your teeth with zero water. That means you didn't even water your yard for that long, and I'm not sure that the neighbors appreciated that. But I'm going to leave the council with that. I know there are remedies, and I am seeking those remedies, but I hope that the press takes my concerns to heart and does just a little bit of investigating. And again, Kathy, not you personally, because you're, you've been a loyal servant to the city, serving on many boards right here, and I'm sure Mayor Salinas would agree with me that it's not anything at you. But if you take a look at what's happened, you know you're in a political season. Well, there's decisions to be made, whether it's to lose money on advertising campaigns. And right now, I'm not running for anything, so they don't need me. I want to thank you for your time and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Tomas. Anybody else who would like to address the council?
State your name and address.
Maria Tejera Salinas.
Thirty minutes.
709 Oblate, Mission, Texas. I also have some serious concerns. I have several homes, not one, three properties in Mission. And sometimes I use water in one, sometimes I use more water in another one. My serious concern is 22 years ago, I came to this council and this mayor, and I told you all, Mission, Texas was in a superfund area. Nobody listened. We started a lawsuit 22 years ago. We made the national priority list as top 10, number 6. Now, all of a sudden, after Robert Simon was blocked from giving his conclusions, all of a sudden, all the firefighters, people running the citrus parade are all coming out with cancer. And I am so sorry, even myself. I am a cancer recipient or a survivor. I, yeah, I received cancer. You know, this world is disturbing when I have so many people come up to me and say, "You know this, you told us," and we didn't listen. Mission, Texas is a state and federal superfund, not three sites, 12 sites. Now, Robert Simon has said Mission, Texas is plagued for the next five generations with, as 100 years. Not only our families, many of our families from Mission, Texas have acquired cancer and have cancer. And again, Mr. Tejera is talking about politics. Well, so am I. I am so tired of people throwing this under the bus and acting as if this is not a major situation. You know what it is. Excuse me.
Is that one minute left?
Oh, you're so concerned about one minute, and you go crying to Washington Post about everything else you did, Mr. Tejera, speak. Furthermore, we have so many political items. I did this, ay, 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 ay. Well, essentially, we still need a lot of sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks. You know, the personal area, we have a lot of places without alleys. We still need beer farm, so the people don't have to throw their trash in front. So, who knows when we're lying saying that they're a lying member? I'm a lying member. There's people in Mission who serve. I've been served my pockets or myself. But I'm tired of this political, you know what it is, fake news and pretending. We're supposed to be united and work together, not for personal interest. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else who would like to address the council, not having anything to do with the agenda? Well, I do think that we should follow the rules and the law. If you have to live inside the City of Mission to run, you must live in the City of Mission to run. And that's all I have to say. I mean, you cannot break the law. And then if you didn't use any water in seven months, that means you was not living there. So, I know that, I've known that for 10 years, so I don't know why it's going to make any difference now. So again, thank you all very much for the participation, and we'll go into our public hearings.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of a .72 acre, more or less, out of lots 15-7 and 15-8, West addition to Sheraland subdivision. This is lot 30 of Melba Carter, unrecorded subdivision, and the property is currently zoned R1, and the request is to change the property to C3 general business. The applicant is Everardo Villarreal. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 28th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Conway Boulevard and Melba Carter. The future land use map does have this area as a general commercial area. It is consistent with the surroundings. There are other commercial areas within the area, and it does border a railroad and Conway, thus making it attractive for commercial use. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommending, recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the 0.72 acres and also to approve ordinance 4611.
Our move for approval is presented.
Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of lots 1 and 2, block 61 of the Mission original townsite subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1, and the request is to change the property to C2, neighborhood commercial. Javier Flores is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 28th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Fourth Street and Miller. This is a site that has a office on it and with parking. What is the next picture? This picture shows you what's currently out there. In the past, Mr. Flores has rented this for a home health agency or a medical, a medical supply agency. And this was also a site that was included in the 2008 rezoning or mass rezoning that the city initiated, and it was C2, and it was changed to R1 as part of that mass rezoning. We have changed other areas in the city back to their original designations, and Mr. Flores desires it to go back to a neighborhood commercial zoning. There was no public opposition. The board unanimously recommended approval of the changing to neighborhood commercial. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we do have a recommendation.
Our move for approval is presented.
Second, Mayor.
We do have a recommendation to approve ordinance 4612. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline. This is for the Stripe Store 40605H. The address is 2900 West Mile 3 Road and on Lot 1 of Texmart, number 43 subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is 7-Eleven Inc. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. Mayor and Council, the next five agenda items have to do with the sale of gas at the Stripe Stores. 7-Eleven has purchased all of the Stripe Stores from the Sussar family, and one of the things that is required to sell gas as a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline, five of the stores in Mission had a CUP that was not transferable to others, and the rest of the stores did have a CUP that was transferable. So the five stores that did not have a CUP that was transferable are the ones that are going to be heard here today. On January 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Mile 3 Road and La Homa Road. The proposed hours of operation are 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and each Stripe Store hires up to 20 employees per store. Parking and landscaping requirements are being complied with. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use and that the CUP will also be transferable to other owners. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4613, and also the recommendation by both planning and zoning and staff.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1. Item 1.1D is also a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline at Stripe Store 40639H. This is at the Stripe Store at 909 North Bryan Road, being the east 165 feet of Lot F, Pecan Heights subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is 7-Eleven. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Business 83 and Bryan Road. Like the previous request from 7-Eleven, the days and hours of operation for this store are Monday through Sunday, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. Each store, or this particular store employs 20 employees, and parking and landscaping are being complied with. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use and that the CUP be transferable to others. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? Order is number 4614.
Our move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit, an ordinance 4614. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1E is a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline at Stripe Store 40638H. This is at 2400 East Highway 83, being Lot 1, Julián González subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is 7-Eleven Inc. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the 0.72 acres and also to approve ordinance 4611.
Our move for approval is presented.
Second, Mayor. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of lots 1 and 2, Block 61 of the Mission original townsite subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1, and the request is to change the property to C2, neighborhood commercial. Javier Flores is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 28, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of 4th Street and Miller. This is a site that has a office on it and with parking. What is the next picture? This picture shows you what's currently out there. In the past, Mr. Flores has rented this for a home health agency or a medical supply agency. And this was also a site that was included in the 2008 rezoning or mass rezoning that the city initiated. And it was C2, and it was changed to R1 as part of that mass rezoning. We have changed other areas in the city back to their original designations, and Mr. Flores desires it to go back to a neighborhood commercial zoning. There was no public opposition. The board unanimously recommended approval of the changing to neighborhood commercial. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we do have a recommendation.
Our move for approval is presented.
Second, Mayor. We do have a recommendation to approve ordinance 4612. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline. This is for the Stripe Store 40605H. The address is 2900 West Mile 3 Road and on Lot 1 of Texmart, Number 43 subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is 7-Eleven Inc. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. Mayor and Council, the next five agenda items have to do with the sale of gas at the Stripe Stores. 7-Eleven has purchased all of the Stripe Stores from the Sussar family. And one of the things that is required to sell gas as a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline, five of the stores in Mission had a CUP that was not transferable to others, and the rest of the stores did have a CUP that was transferable. So, the five stores that did not have a CUP that was transferable are the ones that are going to be heard here today. On January 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Mile 3 Road and La Homa Road. The proposed hours of operation are 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and each Stripe Store hires up to 20 employees per store. Parking and landscaping requirements are being complied with. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use and that the CUP will also be transferable to other owners. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4613 and also the recommendation by both Planning and Zoning and staff.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is also a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline at Stripe Store 40639H. This is at the Stripe Store at 909 North Bryan Road, being the east 165 feet of Lot F, Pecan Heights subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is 7-Eleven. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Business 83 and Bryan Road. Like the previous request from 7-Eleven, the days and hours of operation for this store are Monday through Sunday, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. Each store, this particular store employs 20 employees, and parking and landscaping are being complied with. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use and that the CUP be transferable to others. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? Orders number 4614.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit in ordinance 4614. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1E is a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline at Stripe Store 40638H. This is at 2400 East Highway 83, being Lot 1, Julián González subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is 7-Eleven Inc. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Business Highway 83 and Sheri Road. The days and hours of operation are 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. This store will employ 20 employees, and parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use and that the CUP be transferable to others. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, our ordinance is 4615. It's been recommended by President Antonin and staff to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve, ma'am.
In a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item F.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1F is a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline at Stripe Store 40635H. This is at 1523 North Conway Avenue, being lots 11 and 12 of Block 243, Mission original townsite. The property is zoned C3, general commercial, and the applicant is 7-Eleven Inc. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Conway and Quica de la Garza Loop. The days and hours of operation are 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. 20 employees will man this operation. Parking and landscaping are meeting code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use and that the CUP be transferable to others. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1F is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4617.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item H.
It's Item 1.1G, Mayor. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale of gasoline at Stripe Store Number 40628H. This is at 2107 West Expressway 83, being Lot 1, Tames subdivision. The property is zoned C3, general business, and the applicant is 7-Eleven Inc. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Business Highway 83 and Inspiration Road. This store is open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. It has 20 employees manning the operation, and parking and landscaping are meeting code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use and that the CUP be transferable to others. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1G is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we have a recommendation from President Antonin and staff to go ahead and approve 4617 ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4617 and, of course, the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1H is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to keep a portable building for office use. This is at M's Auto Sales, being 1523 East Expressway 83. This is Lot 6 of Henry Sign subdivision. The property is zoned C4, heavy commercial. The applicant is M&amp;M and M&amp;P Enterprises LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 28, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. Currently, there is a portable building that has been used as a sales office for the sale of automobiles at this location since January 26 of 2005. Since the CUP is not transferable to others, the applicant desires his own CUP to continue with the use of the auto sales and continue to use the sales office that is there on site. It is noted that lots 1 through 5 of the same subdivision all have portable buildings. These are the lots to the west. And they are also either in the auto sales or commercial truck sales. The hours of operation for this proposed business is Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. A total of four to six employees will man the operation. And one of the things that we did stress to the applicant is that this is a very important corner as people are coming into Mission. So, I don't know if you, if the council or the mayor have had a chance to pass by there, but the new owner has cleaned up the place. He's trimmed all the palm trees, cut all the grass. He removed all the vehicles that were in the back of the property, and he's securing all the gaps that were on the solid fence. So, he's really turning this place around. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this CUP, subject to the acquisition of a business license, restriping five parking spaces for customers, including one handicap space, compliance with the sign ordinance, a one-year reevaluation. The P&amp;Z wanted to make sure that he does live up to his end of the deal and clean this place up, so they gave him a one-year approval, and that they comply with Section 1.57-3 of the landscaping and buffering code as far as outside storage. And our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item, item 1.1H is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the ordinance is 4618.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4618 and also the conditional use permit? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We have disposition of minutes for the city of Mission meeting that we had on February the 26th of 2018. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes that we have for our boards. To start with, it's the Planning and Zoning Commission. Had a meeting on January the 24th of 2018 and also had one on February the 14th of 2018. We also had the Mission Service Commission, Civil Service Commission, that had a meeting on February the 2nd of 2018. The Mission Board's in Goust Club went ahead and had a meeting on January the 11th of 2018. Those are it. So, we do need a motion to acknowledge those minutes.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We have Item 4.1. Ms. Carillo?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is approval of interlocal agreement between City of Mission and Sheraland Independent School District to conduct joint elections in accordance with Texas Education Code Section 11.0581. Mayor and Council, this is just an interlocal for us to, so that the voters can be served at a common polling place, Mayor Pro Tem. So, this common polling location will be the Celestino Ramírez Fire Station, Number 3. And I had attached the interlocal for the school district, which has already been approved by them. Staff is recommending approval.
Are there any questions or motion?
Will be the fire station?
Only voting for us will be at the Celestino Ramírez Fire Station. Yes.
I'm glad to hear that. I heard some negative remarks about having it at the administration building.
Yeah, yes, they had some issues. So, no, for ours, we will be going. We've already taken care of those. Some, you know, just some little minor details that we needed to, you know, fix, which has already been fixed, so we're good to go further.
What about Election Day?
We'll also be there at the fire station on Election Day.
That's where it used to be before.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Item 4.1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item. Ms. Nordea.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Item 4.2 is authorization to award bid for housing assistance program, Phase 17-1. We received three bid responses for these projects. We're recommending to award bid to multiple vendors, A1 insulation for a total of $194,500 for the first three projects, and GNG contractors in the total of $188,554 for the next three projects, which both are the lowest responsible bidders, meeting all specifications. CAC recommended approval on March 6, 2018. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
These are for reconstruction?
All six are reconstruction projects, yes.
How many bidders do we have?
We have three bidders. The bid tabulation is on page 160. Three bidders.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the, or award bids for the housing assistance programs to 312 Violent Street for $71,500, 203 East Victory Street for $61,500, 622 North Nicholson Avenue for $61,500, 1112 West 23rd Street for $61,333, 122 O'Blade Avenue for $61,333, and lastly, 505 North Mayberry for $65,888. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, city council. Item 4.3 is authorization to purchase rifle-resistant bulletproof vests via state-approved contract by board contract 507-16. A total of 93 rifle-resistant bulletproof vests will be purchased. Vests will be utilized by our patrol, SWAT, bridge, and traffic officers in types of critical shooting situations. The vest will be worn over the officer's uniform as additional protection. The total amount of the purchase is $39,381. The purchase of these vests will be funded by the Bulletproof Vest Grant from the Office of the Governor. There is no cash match required by the city of Mission. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
No questions?
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to authorize a purchase of rifle-resistant bulletproof vests for, actually, 93 of them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 4.4 is authorization to purchase bulletproof vests via state-approved contract by board contract 507-16. A total of 36 bulletproof vests will be purchased. Vests are to be, are to replace vests currently in use by Mission police officers that are over five years old. The total amount of the expenditure is $28,764. 50% will be paid through our federal drug forfeiture account and the other 50% through our grant, which is this federal grant from the Office of Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistance. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Any questions or motion?
I shall move, ma'am. Second.
Motion and a second to authorize a purchase of 36 bulletproof vests. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item 4.5 is the authorization to amend the interlocal agreement between the Rookland Valley Communications Group and the city of Mission for the installation of a P-25 radio antenna system. The city of Mission is requesting authorization to amend Section 2, duties of RGV GC subsection E, for the purpose of allowing not only access to the tower side, but authorization to service, repair, replace, upgrade, or otherwise maintain any radio repeater or related apparatuses in case of a system failure, where the RGV GC cannot respond to the services called in a timely manner which affects the city of Mission radio communications. The RGV Communications Group has agreed to the aforementioned change to the interlocal agreement. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.6.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present Item 4.6, authorization to accept final completion of Mile 2 roadway project from Conway to Morphew Road. On March 2nd, city staff and consultant LNG Engineering certified that the project has been constructed in compliance with plans and specifications. Final acceptance allows the city to receive final audit and approval from Tech Dot. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve authorization to accept the final completion of Mile 2? Good way. That's eastern west, right?
Correct.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I really want to congratulate you guys because I know you all had a rough time. But finally, we got it done, and it looks real nice. And I want to thank LNG for doing such a good job and putting up with some of our folks. But it's all looking very, very nice. And Inspiration is looking even nicer. So, again, thank you all very much. Item 4.7.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.7, approval of work authorization Number 33 with LNG Engineering for the Speedson study of Mile 2 and Inspiration Road in the amount of $22,437.21. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
We do need a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.8.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.8, authorization to award bids to South Texas Pump for the removal of existing gas tanks. Removal and disposal of existing gas tanks at the property located on the southeast corner of 6th Street and Conway. Received two bid responses. Award to South Texas Pump, lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications in the amount of $6,750. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
We do need a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second, Mayor. We do have a motion and a second to approve the lowest bid. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.9.
Yes, Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have Item 4.9. 4.9 is authorization to accept donation from Winter Texan Activity Association. After 30 years of organized activities, Winter Texan Activity Association has decided to cease activities. By unanimous decision of the board, they have voted to donate the balance of the bank account in an amount of $1,372 to Mission Parks and Recreation Department. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to approve the donation.
I'm going to approve.
Second, Mayor. Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and accept or approve the donation of $1,372 to the Mission Parks and Recreation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We do really want to thank those folks.
Mayor, if I could, I would like to introduce, I have the association president, Sharon Northedge, and her husband, George Northedge. Would you share an audience, Sharon?
Oh, here we go. You don't recognize another check? We did the same one.
The amount was wrong. It's $1,364.72.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. There you be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson, we're going to ask that your visitors take a picture with the council and the mayor. Is that okay?
We should go down there. We should go down there. Let's go down there to take a picture with them.
Oh, oh.
We're going to go down there.
Get a bench in the dog park, in the well park or something.
Did you hear that?
I did hear that.
Okay. Here we go. Thank you so very much for the money.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate it. And thank you for coming to Mission. You coming back? You leaving your money over here. You sure you come back?
We will.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.10 is the approval of the annual Hidalgo County Library System Interlocal Agreement. This agreement allows the county to continue to pay funds on behalf of and disburse funds to us for contractual services and library materials. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the annual Hidalgo County Library System Interlocal Agreement? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 411.
Thank you.
We do have a budget amendment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 411 is approval of the attached budget amendment in the general fund. This meant it's an actual reclassification of $10,000, which will be in the Fleet Department from supplies to capital outlay for the purchase of equipment that will be used for the new in-house fleet maintenance department. All items purchased through this account will be inventoried and by fixed asset division.
We do need a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Don't move.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 412.
Mr. Mayor and Council, on this item, this does involve personnel matters, and I would be asking that the council -- if the council is going to consider this item, that we go into executive session pursuant to Government Code 551.074, as this involves personnel matters and confidential information of an employee.
So you want us to go into executive session?
Yes.
I shall move, Mayor. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second going to executive session for item 412, 7.1?
A.
7.2. Hmm? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
More to reconvene.
We need a -- we have a motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item number 412. The Flores.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 412 is a request for temporary paid leave to Mission Fire Department Lieutenant due to an illness presumed to have been related to the firefighter's line of duty as per Personnel Policy Manual #600.09. The lieutenant was denied his presumptive statutory workers' compensation benefits by TML IRP for his illness claim and is unable to return to work. As per Personnel Policy Manual #600.09, upon the denial of the firefighter's workers' compensation claim for an illness or injury for which a presumption exists, the governing body may consider placing the firefighter on temporary paid leave of absence during the period for which the firefighter is unable to return to work. The lieutenant is currently pursuing a final determination of the workers' compensation claim. A staff recommendation is to grant temporary paid leave as per Personnel Policy Manual #600.09.
More to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Would you go on to item 7.1? Chief?
7.1, Mayor. There is no action to be taken on that.
That's correct, Mayor. 7.1A was considered in executive session, and that was legal consultation with attorney regarding pending litigation civil action 7.18-CV-49 David M. Green individually and on behalf of the estate of David M. Green II versus the City of Mission et al. in the United States District Court, Southern District of Texas, McAllen Division. No further action is necessary on this item, Mayor.
Okay, so there's no action. And 7.2, there's nothing here, so we do need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.